Keith is about to hit, be hit by one of those space lasers.
I think I recognize. I recognize. The beautiful sunset over Mount Hope Bridge.
Oh, that's, that's much better than space lasers. Good, good, good.
It's not Space Force.
It's too bad. I wanted to sign up, but oh, well, I'm too old.
You can still rent, see if you can get a spot on the flight in the fall. Michael, your mystery.
Oh. I struggle with roller coasters that go backwards. There's no way.
I thought this one only gets up a few hundred feet.
If you're tired than a desk chair, I'm not doing it.
That's on the desk chair? Is it cold in Florida?
No, I'm sitting right next to an air conditioner that's blowing directly on me. I was freezing.
That, that's better than mine. It was set at 75.
Um, I just moved it, I just moved it to 72.
I dropped mine to 65.
Nice down here.
We can open the window, it'll be 40.
It did rain here, so it was depressing.
Daniella's scaring me. I'm just keep wondering when her, when her chute's gonna deploy.
6:59?
It is.
As you reset your clocks after the power outage last night?
Yes.
I must have. I'm here on time.
You didn't have a power outage. You didn't lose power down there, did you?
I don't think so. Our clocks now, no, we didn't lose, we didn't lose power, I don't think.
It's, it seemed to be about Cumberland Farms North.
Oh, God.
No, it was, well, it was Clements North there.
Hi, Mr. Robbins. We're good. Very good. Welcome everyone to our February 22th Portsmouth Town Council meeting. Before we get started, those of you that are at home participating on Zoom, you know, to raise your hand with a little icon. If you're calling in on your phone, it's star six to view and unmute your phone, star nine to indicate. Now, you got a question. When called upon, please provide your name and address for the town clerk. And with that, we will stand for our pledge allegiance, pledge allegiance and our moment of silence for Ben Williams. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic. Thank you all. Next, to begin with our roll call.
President.
Ms. Abbott.
Ms. Abbott.
Ms. Buttermeyer.
Here.
Ms. Hamilton.
I am here.
Here.
Dr. Ryan.
Here.
Ms. Ayer.
Here.
I do not have any president's executive summary. On to our consent agenda.
Move to approve as presented.
Thank you all. All those in favor?
Ms. Yujukusa.
Aye.
Ms. Abbott.
Aye.
Ms. Buttermeyer.
Aye.
Hamilton.
Aye.
Aye. Dr. Ryan.
Aye.
Ms. Ryan.
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Next will be sitting as the board of license commissioners. We have a first item is a particular license annual for. Capology Inc., EBA, Capology Cafe, Inc., Russo Road.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Yujukusa.
Aye.
Abbott.
Aye.
Ms. Buttermeyer.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan.
Aye.
Ms. Ryan.
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
To a, to a board of license, thank you, as the board of license commissioners.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Yujukusa.
Aye.
Ms. Abbott.
Aye.
Ms. Buttermeyer.
Aye.
Hamilton.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan.
Aye.
Ms. Ryan.
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Uh, next, we have various meeting minutes. Uh, we've got August 11th, October 17th, November 23rd of 2020, and January 25th and February 8th from 2021.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Uh, Mr. President, real quick, I don't know if you want to do them separately because all of the first three is, obviously I was not in attendance.
Oh, true, true.
All right, let's uh.
Move to approve the minutes of August 11th, October 17th, and November 23rd, all of nineteen, of 2020, not 1920.
That was a different pandemic.
That was quick.
That was.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Ms. Yujukusa.
Aye.
Ms. Abbott.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan.
Aye.
Ms. Ryan.
Aye. So motion passes six to zero and Ms. Buttermeyer abstaining. And now, uh.
Move to approve the minutes of January 25th and February 8th, both of 2021.
Seconded.
Okay. All those in favor?
Ms. Yujukusa.
Aye.
Ms. Abbott.
Aye.
Ms. Buttermeyer.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all. Moving on, we have a request for tax voucher, tax voucher 2021, zero two 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 dash one.
Move to approve. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Yujukusa.
Aye.
Ms. Abbott.
Aye.
Ms. Buttermeyer.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan.
Aye.
Ms. Ayer.
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. And we are moving on to our town administration.
How do you, Mr. President? Town council, ladies and gentlemen. With respect to our COVID update, Rhode Island has formally opened vaccinations for COVID-19 to all residents age 65 as of today at their two state-run sites. This is not for the Portsmouth Pod, this is for the two state-run sites in the pharmacy sites. These sites are located at the Socknosses Crossroad in Cranston and at the Dunkin' Donuts Center in Providence. More sites will open in the coming weeks. Well, eligible for vaccinations at these state-run centers include anyone who is 65 or older who lives or works in Rhode Island or who attends school here, as well as people who previously were eligible under phase one vaccination. So if you were 75 and older and haven't received your vaccination shot, obviously you're still eligible to sign up at these sites. Other options for vaccination still include going to select retail pharmacies for, as I said, for those 75 and older, you can register for vaccination at the Portsmouth site. The Portsmouth Pod is located, the Pod stands for Point Distribution Center. And the Portsmouth Pod is located at Raytheon off of West Main Road. We began operating there last Wednesday. We'll administer first and second doses each Wednesday until we have completed what the state is calling phase one of the inoculation program. I'd like to thank the volunteers, staff, our EMA Director Ray Perry, our Meds Pod Coordinator Rich Kalitsky, and the Med Pod Commander Chief Paul Ford, and the entire team of Raytheon Missile Defense for the tremendous work in establishing the Portsmouth Med Pod. Additionally, the Department of Health has created a survey to gather information for those unable to leave their home to receive a vaccine. If you are unable to leave home to receive a COVID-19 vaccination or you are the healthcare provider or family caregiver of someone who is hometown, you can inform Rhode Island Department of Health through the Rhode Island Department of Health website. All of this information is located at the town's website and through the Department of Health. With respect to the Parks Recreation and Open Spaces Master Plan, a request for proposals for planning services for that master plan was released by the town last Friday. This will be funded by a grant received from the Van Buren Charitable Foundation. Proposals will be accepted until 2:00 PM on March 17th, and the visit will be open at four o'clock the next same day. With respect to the senior center, the Common Defense Point Community Center was contacted by the Portsmouth Senior Center to explore the possibility of temporarily moving some of the most valued programs and services to the Common Defense Point Community Center. The Common Defense Point Community Center Board is enthusiastically in support of helping in any way they can. They have a brand new facility that is ADA compliant and contains state-of-the-art technology. The center hosted the chair of the senior center board last week, and they discussed the senior center's needs and how the center might be, how the community center might be able to assist. There's more work to be done to truly understand the financial and operational implications for that everything that's involved. The center is confident that they can successfully help serve our Portmouth seniors and are welcoming and working with the town and the senior center to do so. Additionally, I've asked the recreation director to meet with the senior center director to discuss possible use of the ground house or program and office space. Lastly, there's been considerable concern regarding the Jacobs report and Estmister Furbish that began in Hudson Building, which is the building which houses the senior center organization. We have architecture, engineering, and planning firms under contract and have asked them to reassess the building and report their cost estimates to the council upon completion. The council can then consider that report, the Jacobs report, the pending proposal from the Church Community Housing Group as you determine your future courses of action. And then lastly, I sent a report that Captain Keith Humphries, United States Navy retired this past. And he's been a long supporter of the town and active in the end development committee, the Economic Development Commission, and the Economic Development Commission Committee. He was a friend to everyone in town hall, a true gentleman that we will all respect. Thank you.
On to resignations and appointments. First, we have a resignation from the Board of Canvassers, Mr. Richard Carpenter.
Move to accept with regret and thanks for Mr. Carpenter for his many years on the Board of Canvassers. And also request that the, the Democratic Town Committee give five names to replacements. I think it's five names they have to give to replace Mr. Carpenter as soon as possible.
Ms. Hamilton, it goes to both parties because it's, um, it was a three, it's a three-chair party. So there is a Republican and Democrat party on it. So it's open to either one.
Okay. Send it to both.
So we have a, we have, we get a second?
No.
Yes. I seconded.
So we have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Ms. Yujukusa.
Aye.
Ms. Abbott.
Aye.
Ms. Buttermeyer.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan.
Aye.
Ms. Ryan.
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Uh, next, we have appointments. We have an appointment to the tree commission for Mr. Brendan De President.
Move to approve. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Ms. Yujukusa.
Aye.
Ms. Abbott.
Aye.
Ms. Buttermeyer.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan.
Aye.
Ms. Ryan.
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. And we have a reappointment to the planning board for Mr. Luke Carden.
Move to approve. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Ms. Yujukusa.
Aye.
Ms. Abbott.
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan.
Aye.
Ms. Ryan.
Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all. Uh, we want to do full business. Full business number one, the comprehensive plan update. Mr. Carpenter.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. President. Let me, I, I would like to say something about the passing of Keith Humphries very briefly. He was one of those people that would quite frequently come into my office to ask me about this or that and what I thought of things and what the facts were about this or that particular issue. And I always appreciated that and I will miss him terribly. So, um, comprehensive plan, as I reported to you a while back and continue to, we are currently assembling the individual draft elements that have been posted on the website for quite some time now. Word for word for what we're working with now, there's been no changes and we're currently assembling those into an individ, pardon me. Sorry, into a whole document that will get presented to the, to statewide planning and to you. We have been, are busy producing maps as well. Sorry, my phone, this, my landline threw me off my game here. So we have, as, as far as the maps are concerned, we have kind of changed our thinking about the maps. In the past, and as what you've seen on the website, we have incorporated the maps into the text and it's been a bit awkward, particularly as far as printing and presentation is concerned. And so we've changed our thinking about the maps and intend to publish basically an atlas that, that accompanies the plan and with references in, inside each of the elements to refer to the particular maps. And so we're working on, uh, producing that. Now, what we, what we intend to produce, what we have, our schedule is you will have, I will be able to present a full, complete, assembled into one document, a, a, the draft comprehensive plan with the correct map references into it by March 10th. We will complete the atlas itself on April 1st. And so as of April 1st, you will have a complete draft of the comprehensive plan that you can go ahead and work with. We've also changed our thinking about adoption of the plan a little bit. In, in order to shorten the timeline, we've been talking with statewide planning and they think, there's a couple of ways to go about this, but they think that the best way is for, in the shortest timeline, is for, well, as you, as, as you may know, you, well, statewide planning cannot begin their formal review process, which is basically shopping it around to all the agencies in our various communities and then, and them reviewing and making recommendations about our plan, which is about a 60-day process. They can't, they cannot start that unless the town council adopts the plan first. So our, originally our thinking was that we would send, based on the comments that we've been getting back from the plan, they, from the individual elements, they've said to us, this stuff looks great. We, we want you to change this and change that and so forth, but we can't make final comments about, um, any individual element until we see that, until we see them together and to see, until we see how the elements coordinate and interact with each other. And so we originally thought that what we would do is assemble the plan and send it up there as a whole, have them comment, then come back down and then take, and then take it to the town council for your approval and then back to them. And they suggested that that's based on what they've seen so far, which they pretty well liked. They haven't, they haven't seen much in the way of, um, uh, significant things that they wanted us to change. They, they said that they thought the best way to go about this was for, for the town council to go ahead and have their formal public hearing and adopt the plan. So we, based on the fact that we can get it to you April 1st, that, we thought that in order for there to be enough time for you and the public to prepare for a public hearing, and we have to advertise for the town council's public hearing three weeks, three times over three weeks, like, similar to the way we do with an ordinance, that a month or so, a month would perhaps suffice to have everybody prepare for the big public hearing on adopting the plan. That, of course, puts it right smack in the middle of your budget reviews at the end of April. And so I, I guess I'm reaching out to the council to see what it is, how, how you want to handle this. I think that the best way, again, like I, like I said, I think the best way is for the town council to proceed with their big formal, uh, public hearing. We certainly need to have enough time for people to see the plan all together and the maps and so forth. So I'm, I'm urging you to, I'm asking you to look at your calendars and decide we could have a, we could hold this public hearing or the first of these public hearings. I suspect that, that, of course, it's your prerogative, but I suspect that we may want to plan on more than one meeting, perhaps continuing so that we don't have to do the three weeks advertising like we've been caught doing in the past, but, but have the first of the public hearings in early May. But perhaps you even want to put it off after that, after the budget process and then go from there. So I'm, I'm, I'm asking you, I'm suggesting that the, what we want to do is proceed to a public hearing as quickly as we can, but acknowledging that you are starting into the budget process and, and how you want to handle it.
Twenty-four. You'll probably finish your hearings the last week of April. I don't know that you want to go right into the next week with your hearings due the week of the 17th. It's not a special, special being for the 17th.
Yes, I would suggest that this be a, that this be a standalone meeting of not being part of, part of your, um, regular. It, of course, is up to you.
That would be tentatively the week of May 17th. If it takes two meetings, who can do two meetings that week? If we, if we reserve two meetings the week of the 17th, because if we, if we only do the one meeting and then it gets continued, it could jeopardize when we have that second meeting, unless we're able to. I don't know. Are you folks able to hear that? We're talking about possibly the, the seven, Monday the 17th and Wednesday, the 19th, as reserved the two dates for special meeting on the common plan.
I, I think it'd be best if we scheduled those times and then scheduled the actual sections we're going to talk about so that people who have an interest in a particular session don't have to sit through both meetings. And it's 12, 12 sessions, Gary?
There are 12 elements plus the implementation element to the plan.
Getting through six or seven elements a night might be a bit of a stretch. We might need three meetings or four.
Maybe we won't do a budget this year. We need to do a conference. Seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. Might be all that week, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. And, uh, and let's reserve the 20th. That's a peasant. Roll over. You don't get them done. We'll have the four nights. I know it's a lot, but the conference is, is, is very comprehensive and there's a lot of elements to go through. Uh, so let's give it, let's give it its due and make sure we have adequate time.
I think we should do, do those four nights and block two hours each night, cut it off at nine o'clock and then, unless we're in the middle of a section. Because if, once you get past two hours of doing this stuff, it might get a little, uh, glazed overlook, kind of like Mark's getting right now.
Like I, like, like I have, like I have perpetually had for the last two years.
I understood, Gary, but I, I know there's a ton of interest in it.
Well, good. Yes, I, I hope so. Yes.
We have some good changes and, and we can put this thing to bed for another 10 or 15 years.
Five, five years, five years, five years.
Okay. So, um, how about, should we have a motion for those?
Absolutely. So moved. Mr. Crosby, you said you're going to have this on the website by April 1st?
I will, I, we should have honor about April 1st. We should have, certainly we will have the entire text of the document and the page, and we hope to have the maps to accompany by, by April 1st. Yeah. So that gives you about six weeks.
Perfect. That gives everybody six weeks to review it. Good, good bedtime reading.
Okay. We have a motion for the hearing for the comprehensive master plan, the 17th, 18th, 19th. We have a second?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Ms. Yujukusa.
Aye.
Ms. Abbott. Ms. Buttermeyer.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan.
Aye.
Ms. Ryan.
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay.
Thank you all very much. We're getting close. I can feel it.
All right. We'll, we'll stay tuned. Thank you, Mr. Crosby. It's been a long process. Okay. Next move on to the monthly finance report. Mr. Ring?
The last monthly report is, uh, I have a, but the bottom line is, this is the January report. This update is, uh, represents 58% of the current fiscal year. As written here, revenues at the time of this report was written. As written here, revenues at the time this report was written were 53%. Latest posted put our revenues actually at slightly above 55%. So we're right about where we were last year and expenditures, or revenues, I'm sorry. And expenditures are 57%, which is just slightly above where we were this one last year. So we're still on glacial. We're getting the year positive.
Thank you, Mr. Ring.
Motion to receive and place on file.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jukuzah?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Ms. Brown?
Hi.
Ms. Hamilton?
Hi.
Hi.
Ms. Ryan?
Hi.
Ms. Ryan?
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, we are moving on to new business. Our first item is an update, Clean Ocean Access, a 2020 update. Space. Downside. I'll do what I can. How about, I thought it's on Max?
Yes, I'm, I'm Zoe. My name is, is Rain, but thank you for taking the time for us today.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Well, good evening, council members. My name is Zoe and I'm the Sustainability Coordinator at Clean Ocean Access in Middletown. We started as a grassroots organization in 2006 and became a nonprofit in 2014, primarily focused on improving ocean health. We're here tonight to first thank you for the civic support that you provided us in 2020 and to provide you with an update to share some of the things that we were able to achieve with help from the support. So in 2020, we hosted 90 cleanup events, removed 1,495 pounds of trash from Portsmouth. These were a combination of cleanups that were posted at locations such as Peasant Drive Beach, Pory's Lane, Island Park, and Gold Coast, as well as several small cleanups that were performed by Portsmouth community members. We also worked on protecting public shoreline access by working with a team of volunteers who performed monthly monitoring at each of the right-of-ways in Portsmouth every month. And lastly, I want to share one of our 2021 goals with you, which is to assess the opportunity to move our weekly water testing that we normally do in Middletown and Newport to Portsmouth. Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Eva Tuie and I'm the Program Manager at Clean Ocean Access. And can you hear me all right? Okay, and I'm going to share an update on our education outreach and also our Healthy Soils, Healthy Seas Rhode Island composting project. So before COVID hit, we were actively composting at Hathaway Elementary School within their lunchroom as part of our Zero Waste Lunchroom Initiative, but that became, that came to a halt in the beginning of January. But thankfully, we are actually engaging the fourth graders at Melville and Hathaway Elementary Schools in composting in their classroom lunchroom. So that's been a really exciting journey and progress that we've been able to have over the past couple of months, as well as we're going to be starting to compost with the sixth graders at the Portsmouth Middle School this month. So by March, we'll have the fourth graders, every fourth grader and the sixth graders in Portsmouth composting within their classrooms at school. We've also been hosting Land to Sea Speaker Series every month, featuring nonprofit organizations and governmental agencies sharing the work that they've been doing across the Equinix Island communities, including Portsmouth, improving water quality, but also leaving homeowners and businesses with actionable steps that they can take to improve water quality. And we're going to be continuing this Land to Sea Speaker Series each month if you are available and interested in attending. And then for Healthy Soils, Healthy Seas Rhode Island Project, this is a composting, a grant-funded composting initiative that allows businesses and residents to start composting. So in the town of Portsmouth, we have two HubSpot drop-off locations for food scraps that residents can use at Clement's Marketplace and the Portsmouth, Portsmouth Transfer Station. And together, they've diverted 14 tons of food waste from going to the landfill, which is pretty amazing. We currently have 82 residents composting at their homes. And overall, the residents have a combined effort of diverting 16 tons of food scraps from the landfill. And then also through our commercial collections, we've diverted 36 tons of food scraps from the landfill, which has been working primarily with the green grocer and the schools. And I think that's all that I wanted to share for that. Oh, and I guess in 2021, we're just going, we're going to continue to expand residential and commercial composting within the town of Portsmouth. Max, do you want to take it over?
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Eva.
I don't know where you went.
Councillors, for the last update here, my name's Max Kramer, I'm the Project Coordinator at Clean Ocean Access, currently working on our Marina Trash Skimmer Program as well as our Shrink Wrap Recycling and Life Cycle Analysis Project. On the Marina Trash Skimmer side of things, it started in May of 2017 and to date, that skimmer at New England Boat Works, Safe Harbor's New England Boat Works now, has removed just over a ton of material, which is great for that, for that inlet of coastline. As, in, in 2020, we did not run the skimmer based off capacity. In 2021, we do plan to reinstall it and engage more with the data collection side of things and both on the education, getting, getting back after it hopefully. On the shrink wrap recycling end, we are actively looking to establish a domestic recycling stream for shrink wrap, the white wrap that's on the boats. I'm working to, of course, advanced collections will really think about the recycling of this material in a circular nature, or the end goal would really be turning this wrap back into shrink wrap. We're really excited on that and not only working with the town of Portsmouth, the state of Rhode Island on increasing diversion rates as well as really expanding this across the North East and getting numbers. Definitely echoing the whole team and thanking for the support of the Port, Town of Portsmouth and look forward to doing more in this coming year. Happy to take any questions.
I, I'm not sure if it was, may have been, so we was doing the presentation on the shoreline right-of-way access. Are, are you coordinating that with the Harbor Commission and the town plan? On the right-of-way?
Yes, so we work with the Harbor Commission, CRMC, and the town to address any needs or issues at the right-of-ways. Doing our monthly monitoring helps us figure out what those are and work with the right people to, to try to address any issues.
That's, I just wanted to confirm that. I know that they, they are responsible for that. So coordinating those efforts. All, we could use all the help we can get.
Definitely.
Anyone else saying questions?
Just a quick question. Has Clean, I'm assuming Clean Ocean Access has put in a letter of support or will be testifying against the, the NIP bill? For lack of a better term?
Yeah.
Hey, Dave.
Hi, Keith. Good to see you. And fellow councillors, I, I just wanted to say that we did testify in support of the Chairman Bennett's bill for the deposit on NIPS as well as the overall bills related to the overall deposits on all sun-to-use containers.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yes, this is Gary. If I may jump in for a moment to talk about rights of way.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
I've been reporting for a couple of years now and to the Harbor Commission and Clean Ocean Access that we have a couple of, of rights of way that have CRMC signs on them, but they're not in fact CRMC designated rights of way. And a couple of rights of way which are designated CRMC rights of way that don't have signs. And so I talked to CRMC quite extensively and put in a request just not too long ago. Rather than going through the process of removing signs and moving them to the places where they're supposed to be, these signs have been in place for many years. The neighbors are well aware of the access and so forth. We hit a CRMC and I hit upon an idea about actually formally applying to CRMC to have those rights of way that do, that, that are not CRMC designated, but do have signs in place to actually make them CRMC designated signs. And so we are now, we have 17, we have 17 current rights of way. There are two which were in the pipeline, have been in the pipeline for many years for CRMC designation. And now I'm adding three more. So so, so perhaps 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21 will, will come about in short order. So I think that that's a good outcome.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any, no further comments? I do not see any hands up? Could we, just a motion to receive, place on file, or just moving on? I think we can just move on. Thank you all from Clean Ocean. Appreciate the update. Keep up the good work.
Thanks, councillor.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Next, we have the Wellness, Wellness Week with parent proclamation. Jen, is there anyone to speak? Okay, well. Yes, we need the motion first to, we have a proclamation, the Wellness Week proclamation. I'd be happy to read the proclamation and then we can, we can vote on it.
It gets us out of playing with dodgeball, so let's go for it.
And our shoulders are all very thankful. Thank you all. Town Portsmouth proclamation, Wellness Week with Aaron, an initiative to promote personal wellness, healthy choices, and the power of being you. The goal is to prevent the misuse of substance abuse and to empower those affected by the disease addiction. This week, we will build upon the retired Go Purple Week to make an even bigger impact in the lives of students, individuals, and communities nationwide. By practicing wellness, self-care, and healthy choices, we can equip ourselves and others with proper coping skills and stress management techniques to deal with life's challenges substance-free. And whereas, practice and wellness allows us to take care of our wants and needs to create happy, healthy, and fulfilling lives. Wellness assists us in establishing boundaries, creating healthy habits, and loving who we are. This framework helps prevent the misuse of substances and helps those in recovery feel more grounded in their sobriety. Overall, physical, mental, and social being help us live the amazing lives we deserve, free from the negative effects of substances. And whereas, wellness gives us tools to meet life's challenges, enjoys substance-free, and strengthen our self, sense of self. Wellness is about slowing down and getting in touch with who you are. And whereas Wellness Week is all about practicing healthy ways of handling life's challenges with the goal of prevention and recovery of substance use disorder. Each day of the week, we encourage to practice an element of wellness, connect with your best self, and be you, live well. Now therefore, I, Kevin, and Maggie are President of Portsmouth Town Council. I hereby proclaim March 1st through the 6th, 2021, as Wellness Week with Aaron, Town of Portsmouth. And I urge all citizens to celebrate by wearing purple, participating in special events, online webinar, and social media content. Let's celebrate wellness, recovery, being you, and living well.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jukuzah?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Ms. Brown?
Hi.
Ms. Hamilton?
Hi.
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Ms. Ryan?
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all. Okay. Next, we have a resolution requesting supporting legislation through Title 44, Chapter 5 of the General of the Rhode Island General Laws regarding the taxation of real estate. I, I believe, while I know before me I have the corrected amendment, the one that was in our backup had a few reference to the prior legislation. We do have the corrected resolution. And I don't believe Terry is available.
Mr. President, I'd just like to, I'd make a motion to pass this resolution. We passed it a couple of years ago, as you know, but if you want to maybe make an, one more amendment, I'm not sure it's in your copy, but where it says resolved to draft, introduce, and pass legislation, it should actually just say to pass S. 115 and H. 5407.
We've corrected, we've corrected it.
Okay, thank you.
Updated that solution. It didn't make it to the backup.
Okay, well, with, with that amendment, I would move to pass this resolution again.
Second.
All, all those in favor?
Ms. Jukuzah?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Ms. Brown?
Hi.
Ms. Hamilton?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Ms. Ryan?
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all. Okay. To new business number four. This is a request and a discussion on the Town Council guidance regarding civic, civic support requests. Mr. Ring, why don't you give us a brief?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. What you have before you is a summary of the requests that we received for the next fiscal year with regard to civic support. Essentially, that is the same list that you received last year with one addition. The Art Guild has made a request this year that has previously been made. Other than that, you have vetted these organizations in the past. There was a request two years ago to move the Quidditch Island planning mission into civic support. That, we inadvertently left that in the planning budget last year, which was discussed during the budget hearings. That is now in the civic support line. What we are hoping for tonight, we are in the final stages of preparing the budget. We were hoping, as we did last year, to have a discussion, for you to have a discussion and perhaps give us some guidance as to what your feelings are regarding granting these requests. As you can see, it does go up almost 4%. Part of that, however, is the Portsmouth Island Volunteer Fire Department. This is, normally I would say, I'm going to hear like this, I'll try to keep it as low as possible. However, last year, you did plus up their budget by about $80,000 by materials in your backup. You did receive their budget. This was reviewed by myself, the former Finance Director and Chief Board at the Fire Department, and I'm real confident that that is an appropriate budget and we would support their request as made in this summary. So we were hoping, bottom line, just to get a little direction on with regard to this as we finish bringing budget.
Thank you, Mr. Ring. You have any initial comments from councillors?
Sure. As, as with last year and in years past, these are all worthwhile organizations. But we are still in the midst of But we are still in the midst of revenue shortfalls and the pandemic. You know, I'll go straight off the top of the planning commission. They've made promises in the past to keep us updated as to what's going on. We haven't heard from them over a year. So I wouldn't have any qualms about cutting that $18,000 out and using it in other locations. Be Great for Nate is a very good organization, but I think we should just keep them level funded at 3,000. Thank you for the Karma Influence Point Improvement Association Arts and Wellness Community Center for not requesting this year. And I hope they're well on their way to being a successful organization. Two organizations I think that we should support and increase, one is the Martin Luther King Center, since they do provide meals for our residents. I think we should actually increase what meals and wheels, even though they've only asked for 1,000, maybe we should give them two. Especially in light of the senior center building not being available coming up in the end of June. I think that we should be able to support organizations that are going to help others be able to get meals on a regular basis. Certainly, mental health is an incredible challenge with this pandemic. I think we could probably find $7,000 there. Arts Guild, great organization, not sure we can do 10,000, maybe we can cut that in half and do five. Same thing with the library, very difficult year. I don't know if we can do an increase there. Have to see and discuss some things with the library. And if the, if Chief Ford has reviewed and Prudence Island is getting on a more stable foundation, I can see the $15,000 increase if it's for operating expenses. But somehow, I would like this to see is come in somewhere closer to level funding rather than a 3.7% increase. Those are my thoughts.
Mr. Alton, just to clarify one thing, I believe with poor mental health, they're seeking a $700?
Did I say 7,000? Sorry.
Thousand.
So just 700.
I just wanted to confirm your intention.
Jamie probably just got very excited, I said 7,000. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Alton, for those comments. Do we have Mr. Jukic?
Mr. President, I see a lot of people representing, some of these organizations are attending. And perhaps they did want to say a few words, and I would be open to hearing what they had to say since they've come to the meeting.
Hi. Okay. I just saw a hand come up. A couple of hands are coming up. Let's start at top.
Heather Strout?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Heather Strout, the Executive Director of the Dr. Martin Luther King Community Center in Newport. Thank you for letting me have a couple of minutes to talk. So last year in 2020, the center remained open and in full service, other than our education programs. For a couple of months, we helped 4,998 people in Newport County with hunger, education, and social support. And that includes 220 Portsmouth residents and 100 from 140 families. Most of those Portsmouth families were with our hunger services programs. We went to Quaker Manor monthly through, and actually bi-weekly throughout COVID, distributing food and personal hygiene products. And then we also have several families that we feed through our Food to Friends program, which brings groceries right to the doors of people who are homebound in Portsmouth and throughout Newport County. There are 19 Portsmouth residents that received that regular delivery. So thank you so much for your support and thank you, Keith, for your encouragement to increase our support because of the increased demand of our services.
Next, we have Be Great for Nate, and we don't know who.
Sorry, that's just my account name. So this is Steven Peterson, the Executive Director of Be Great for Nate. Thanks again for allowing me to speak. And thanks again last year for beginning funding our programming. It's been a huge help. I do want to point out that our increase in funding also goes along with our increase in services that we've been providing. Last year, when I approached you, we were giving services to about 50 different youth from Portsmouth. That's well over 100 now, and that's just high school-aged youth. Within the next several months, we'll also be adding about 50 middle school, 50 to 100 middle schoolers into our programs as well as we expand out to the Every Student Initiative Middle School Edition. We've started up the Substance Use Prevention Team, which is now in partnership and co-branding with Heron Wellness and Heron Project. It's a group of high school teens committed to not using substances that will work with elementary and middle school-aged kids and teaching them the proper coping skills so that when they do make it to high school, substance use isn't even something that crosses their mind. We've also just begun offering free peer support groups to high school girls, and that'll branch out to middle school girls as well as high school boys and middle school boys. So those ones are completely free for anyone and everyone through Zooms each week, and we will be going virtual. While COVID has really struck a lot of different cores within our community, hunger being one of them, as you touched on, the health and wellness of our teens has probably been the one that has been affected the most in a negative way. I would say that previously, Be Great for Nate, in my position, I was doing one wellness check or one crisis assessment on a teen a week. I now do about six since COVID has started in the forced isolation of teenagers. Our services are needed now more than ever before, and that is why we are looking for more increase in our funding. Thank you.
Wendy Davis?
Hello, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Wendy Davis. I'm with the Portsmouth Arts Guild. We are seeking funding for our full-service art center. We offer a full schedule of about 20 art classes this year. All of our classes have been converted to a virtual online format through Zoom, or they're offered outside and safely socially distanced. Students are then encouraged to exhibit their artwork in our gallery, but our gallery has also been converted to a virtual format. So we're operating very well in this pandemic. We are seeking funding to pay for our one-part-time employee. We have no full-time employee and only one part-time employee who helps us to exhibit online. And we're also seeking funding to pay our art instructors. We try to get prestigious instructors who can teach these courses, and we offer a full slate of classes, some of which are very affordable one-day workshops. Others are more extensive, several-day classes. And we also offer summer camp and other classes for children during summers and school break. So we appreciate the time and thank you very much.
Thank you. David? Cynthia Connect. Are you?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi. Okay, this is a challenge this year for us. We certainly appreciate the Town Council for supporting us for 40 years. That's an awful long time, a lot of money. But I think fiscal year '22, I think it's very important that you still support us. We want to continue, hopefully, at the senior center, although I know it doesn't look good right now for us that we would have to move our D. Ann Pudgeason building, but maybe some miracle will happen. If not, we are going to find a place if we have to send our seniors for activities to Conference Point. I'm hoping that the money that you would award us, that some of that money could go to Conference Point, or we could pay for our seniors going there for their exercises and our meal site program. Just to let you know that we, from January of last year to January of this year, we have served 4,325 meals, and majority of that, of course, is during COVID times. We lost a lot of our fundraising, the majority of our fundraising. We could not have our thrift shop open. We did not have our yard sale this year. We did not have our bazaar, so that is the majority of our funding. We do have our Counter Raffle and Clements Market, which I'm very thankful for Clements Market. So I do hope that we can continue our support and somehow move forward and keep the money in Portsmouth.
Thank you. Next, it's Newport Mental Health.
Yes, this is Edward McPherson at Newport Mental Health. I'm the Director of Development and Marketing. And I just wanted to say thank you for your previous support. I want to echo Steven Peterson's comments that we have been crisis the last 12 months, truly. Haven't taken a day off. Fantastic staff. We've actually staffed up from 85 employees to 130 to meet the need. And from the numbers, the figures attached with your packets, you'll see in the previous fiscal year, we served 282 Portsmouth residents, and the one that's just closed, we served 312. The dramatic increases, and your consideration is greatly appreciated. And I'd answer questions you may have either here or offline.
And you? Do you have a question?
This is Rebecca Keester, I believe she answered for Meals on Wheels.
Rebecca Keester, can you hear us?
I can, can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak on behalf of Meals on Wheels of Rhode Island. I'm the Director of Development and Public Relations there. Our Executive Director, Megan Grady, would have loved to have been here, but it fell on the same night as our board meeting. So thank you. We have submitted a request for level funding, but thank you so much for suggesting and supporting an increase in funding, as we've actually seen an increase in the number of Portsmouth residents that we serve in 2020 over 2019. In 2019, we served 33, and last year, we served 43 Portsmouth residents. These are homebound seniors unable to safely leave the home or shop for a meal or prepare it on their own. Excuse me, they received a total of 5,400 home-delivered meals, representing an investment in your community of $41,700. With each home-delivered meal, the resident receives a vital safety check as well as an opportunity for socialization that addresses the feelings of isolation and loneliness associated with a person's homebound status. We're proud at Meals on Wheels of Rhode Island that we have had no disruption to the program during the pandemic. We have, of course, put every safety measure needed into place, including socially-distanced deliveries, and in fact surged during the pandemic, especially at the very height of it in the late spring, from delivering 1,200 meals a day statewide to up to 4,000 meals a day statewide. While that has subsided and sunsetted for a program that was funded through the CARES Act, we see no decrease coming in the need for our services and are thankful and grateful to the Town Council for your continued support. We also have our annual March for Meals public awareness campaign coming up starting next week. And we'd be honored if a Town Council representative would consider making a delivery to a Meals on Wheels client in your community and actually proclaiming that day that you do as March for Meals Day in Portsmouth. Last year, we were unable to, excuse me, hold our deliveries to clients with elected officials, but now we are doing it in a socially-distanced manner with clients who can receive their meal outside. So thank you very much.
And we do also have Dave from Clean Ocean Access. Planning Commission.
We have, yeah, we're showing up as a Quinix Island Planning Commission.
Hello, good evening. Thank you to the council. This is Allison McNally. I'm the Program Manager with the Equinix Island Planning Commission, and I am standing in for Sarah Chergan, our Board Chair, because she also had another meeting conflict this evening. Very appreciate the opportunity to speak before the council about the organization and the work that we've been doing. As you know, our largest project has been Island Waters, which is to help all the communities on Equinix Island restore clean drinking and coastal waters. In the past, probably seven months or so, we've been busy performing construction on two projects, one for Hugendor Nurseries in Middletown, which is for the Southern Island Watershed Drinking Water Supplies. And we also have just fully completed, to benefit Sisson Pond Watershed, a wet vegetated treatment system on Island Drive in Middletown. And we are in the process of finalizing funding to begin work on St. Mary's Pond Carriage Drive, wet vegetated treatment systems. And we're anticipating that construction to begin, if possible, in April or early May. The value of those projects for the Sisson Pond work and the wet vegetated treatment system that was installed, that was approximately $242,000 that were expended, funding that was secured through the ENAM as matching funds to the other nearly million dollars that we raised through a grant program from the EPA Southern New England Program District. For the St. Mary's Pond work and Carriage Drive work, I had originally addressed the council and had said that we were valuing that work to be approximately $440,000. In reality, when we went out to bid, the prices came back significantly higher. So that work now will be, at the time it is completed, approximately $825,000 worth of wet vegetated treatment system implementation installation on the St. Mary's Pond Equinix Land property. In addition to that, we have supported a number of initiatives across the island, and we are currently working with the municipalities to identify more targeted joint municipal planning issues for the coming year into 2022 and 2023. And I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Keith, Mr. Allen. I'll set it at this point, I think. Actually, Mike Mello? Mike?
I'm sorry. We have to do a video again. There we go.
I'm all set. Michael Mello, President of the Board of Trustees of the Portsmouth Free Public Library and have been for the past 35 years. And I've had the pleasure of coming before the council for 35 years. I only found out about this meeting at late this afternoon when I received an email full of apologies, but I would have planned something more appropriate. But the library is your public library. I've always been a little concerned that we were just a civic support. We're actually running the public library for the town of Portsmouth, and we do it as a real bargain in comparison to those communities where the public library is part of town government. We don't have unions, we don't have a lot of things that would raise the cost of running a public library. It's been a very difficult year, but in spite of that, we never really closed. From the beginning of this pandemic... From the beginning of this pandemic, we, the staff was by the phones, fielding calls, fielding reference questions right from the beginning. In, in, uh, that was in March 16th. In April 27th, we started crib-side delivery. So we brought books out for patrons who would call in or order on, on the internet. We began into the library loans on the 28th of April. On June 1st, there was computer access in the library. Right from the beginning, people could go to the computer lot and, and use the wifi for computer access. And then July 6th, we, we fully opened. All of these dates were really on recommendations from the state library services, who got their recommendations from the health department. So we've been running throughout this pandemic and, and doing quite well. The additional costs involved, we're asking for 2%. We'd like to give our library workers a slight raise. We only, we only have, uh, six full-time people at the library. The rest of them are all part-timers. So we juggle a lot to keep our library open for the hours that, that we do. Um, in addition, you have to realize that's an 1889 building. So it's old and there are a lot of problems with an old building. Um, but luckily we have gotten many grants over the years to double the size of the, the, the library, to do roofing, to do many things that the town does not have to pay for because we managed to get grants. So I think, uh, the, the 2% increase is not excessive. In addition to what the, the state gives us and the town gives us, we still have to raise like $50,000, which has been very difficult this past year. Most of our fundraising things had to be canceled. Um, so it's, it's a, it's really a difficult process to operate this, this building, this whole, uh, public library for the town of Portsmouth. So we need to have your continued support for the library.
Anne, can you hear us?
I can, can you hear me?
We got you.
Okay, great. Hi, everybody. I am Anne Burns. I'm, uh, President of the Portsmouth Historical Society. And thank you for providing grant opportunities for organizations like us. Thank you for last year's grant. And we are asking for level funding this year. We have a few interesting things going on that are new for us. The pandemic, uh, kind of hurried up our strategic plan a little bit because we weren't able to open the museum to the public. So we sort of dove headlong into some of our major initiatives under the strategic plan. Two recent developments are that we actually hired staff for the first time. We have a part-time administrative assistant who is helping us with our memberships, dues, uh, financial handlings. So that is going to free up our board members who have traditionally done all of that time-consuming task work. It will come things like, um, the items that you have that the town of Portsmouth has, uh, tasked us with in the comprehensive plan that you were just recently discussing. Um, we also hired a part-time professional registrar who's currently going through our collections right now to catalog them. And with the hope of sort of reimagining our displays to draw more visitors to the museum, both near and afar, um, you saw how much interest the Fort Butts Initiative. Um, we had a lot of people there on a rainy day. People are extremely interested in Portsmouth, Rhode Island's association with the Battle of Rhode Island. Um, so we've got the, we founded the Fort Butts Committee to help with that town project in cooperation with you. And I think that's going to be really, uh, an interesting thing. We also are currently reviewing bids to have HVAC in our building, both upstairs. Upstairs has never been, um, hasn't been heated or air-conditioned before. And our goal there is to be open year-round to host even more events for the town and, um, and our members, you know, are actually growing membership. We had a really nice, successful town-wide membership campaign. You probably all got them. And we thank all of you who signed up and have been loyal supporters of the Historical Society for a lot of years. Um, I think that is probably, uh, the, the last thing that probably I wanted to mention is that we, we are, uh, installing historic signs around various points of interest. Those ones that are there now that had been put up before. There were four of them. They are kind of dilapidated and were replaced. And our goal and our hope is to have historic markers talking about points of interest all over the town of Portsmouth for the benefit of all. So we're doing great things and we appreciate all of your help and support. And we hope that you see fit to be able to level fund us this year so we can keep a register, the registrar is only temporary, but it would be great if we could have one, uh, full-time. It's a, it's a vital professional function for us. So thank you very much.
Now I can say thank you. I have no power. Thank you, Anne, for those, for those words. Next, next, and we have Kathy Olm for, I mean, for the Island School Foundation.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
It's a, there's a little bit of feedback.
Um, I don't, I really don't have the expertise to know how to get rid of the feedback. Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yes, Kathy, we can hear you.
Oh, okay.
Well, I can hear you.
Oh, okay. All right. Um, I just wanted to thank you all for your support and assistance this past year. Our grades this year ranged from kindergarten to 12th grade. We're very excited about having a graduating senior this coming June for the first time in four years. And, uh, just so you know, we anticipate having the same number of students this coming year, possibly a few extra as we've had an influx of, uh, people moving to the island. So, uh, there is a possibility of two or three more students than what we have now. Uh, again, we thank you very much for your support and help this past year. And I am here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Kathy. All right. I, um, I, I know what Quinac Island has already spoken, but thanks a lot. All right.
Hi, this is Sarah Chergan. Um, I'm sorry I'm late. I did have a board meeting. So I thank Allison, who's probably not still on, for filling in for me, um, for AIPC. So I am speaking on behalf of Eastern Rhode Island Conservation District. As the district manager, I want to thank you for the support in the past. We are asking for level funding this year. We've started a new project, which had started just before COVID hit. I started working with Portsmouth Middle School on a farm education project. The, uh, district has a lease on five acres of farmland on Jepson Lane. And, um, we started talking to the principal at Portsmouth Middle School, who gave his full endorsement in a partnership to do STEAM teaching once the farm was built. So, um, I started working with science coach Margie Brennan. And we started an after-school program. Then, of course, COVID hit. We went to a virtual after-school program and we got 25 children to voluntarily sign up to be, um, do virtual after-school class on agriculture. And, um, that went from March through June. And then we went out to the property. One of my board members brought his plow and was able to plow some fields for us so the kids could just experience putting seeds in the ground, um, watering, weeding, harvesting. And we probably had about 30 kids who came out with us this summer, all socially distanced. So, uh, now what I've been doing is, um, essentially writing grants to get this farm built. And the thousand dollars would go towards helping, uh, on my time for this project, which will be a great benefit. We, the department, the entire Portsmouth School Department has signed on to the project. So it now won't just be the middle school. It will also be the, um, elementary schools as well as the high school who will benefit from this program. So I hope that you will approve our request. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, so we go back to Dave.
Hi, Dave McGough on here. Thank you again for your previous support. And, uh, we recognize these are certainly difficult times. And despite these challenges, we were able to increase our impact and actually get more people outside last year with your funding. It really allows us to take more action for a healthy environment and a healthy economy with our new recycling efforts that we just covered, uh, and also educating the youth of Portsmouth. We're looking to expand our water quality and monitoring efforts into Portsmouth, increasing our island-wide food scrapping, composting to reduce waste, and really expanding the sustainability education across our, all four schools in Portsmouth. And, uh, and working with the town and the state to expand rights of ways. You know, lastly, as a local group representing the environment of Quinac Island, we also stay involved with state legislation as it relates to some of the things that we've worked on together, addressing single-use plastics, shoreline access, and certainly the bottle and nip bills. Thank you again for supporting Clean Ocean Access. I look forward to the partnership and, uh, we appreciate the ability for level-loading funding this next fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. I, I would like to thank, uh, all of the, uh, folks who have provided the additional, uh, support and information, um, on these civic support requests. And, um, I think, uh, I think it was a theme with many of the, uh, speakers tonight. And, you know, these are difficult times, uh, for the town. And, um, these are all, uh, wonderful initiatives. There's a lot of services that are being provided to the town through some of these different civic support items. And we will continue to do our best, uh, to make the decisions that are necessary to balance the budgets. Are you folks able to hear? I, we're getting feedback on this end, so I'm just, um, we will do our best as we, as we work through the budget process to, you know, to evaluate each of these requests. You know, this is a, a framework tonight for many of the requests. We're not, you know, we're not here tonight to make decisions up or down. But we are here to, you know, try to provide some guidance. You know, Mr. Hamilton did, did take a, uh, a pass-through and offered some feedback. I, I do echo, uh, some of Mr. Hamilton's comments there where, uh, this, these civic support requests are approaching a million dollars. At the bottom line, it's, it's close to a million dollars, uh, in requests. And, um, in order to do this, we have to find balance throughout our budget. And, you know, at, at this point, I would support, um, you know, keeping, you know, keeping these items in the process as we develop the budget. But we need to try to hold, you know, last year's line of, of $964,000 as we go through the process. It, it could go up, but I think we need to at least start with that as we go through the budget process. This is just my, my opinion. Um, I'm, I'm going to open it back up to counselors, uh, to continue to, to discuss. But I, I do support it. I do support the requests that we have in the past. But these are tough decisions. We are still in a pandemic. And, you know, the town did see a drop in revenue last year. You know, we too suffer from the, the lack of, of some of these functions, uh, our beaches, the recreation, the campgrounds. You know, the, the areas that we look to for revenue down at the Quinn Manor House, all of those revenue sources had shortcomings last year. So these are very tough decisions. And, you know, I assure you that we, we do not take them lightly and we try to make these decisions, uh, that are in the best interest of the town. So, uh, I'll turn it back over to counselors if anyone would like to speak. Anyway.
Right, thank you, Mr. President. Um, just a couple of things. I echo most of what you said and, um, I do disagree with Mr. Hamilton. I think that AIPC should receive the additional funding for the reasons that, um, Ms. McNally pointed out. But also I have a question about, um, the senior center funding. I, of course, all of us want to support our seniors. However, I think that to look at this as a simply status quo maintaining situation is not a good way to look at this. And I just wanted to confirm that, um, I heard is that there was a possibility that the senior center will be, uh, reaching out and meeting with Common Fence Point Association. Is that right, Cindy? To try to see what other options are available? Because I, I just want to make sure that that can happen because it will potentially affect the amount of money that the town needs to, um, put in. I think it's a great idea, Cindy, and I, I, I hope that I heard you right, that you're going to be meeting with CFP.
Yes, um, we're trying to work out a deal with them. But, um, I would like to see, you know, if we could go there and if it was possible that we could pay for our seniors to go there.
Yeah.
Because I wanted, let, really opposed to go to the town senior center. They want to stay in Portland. And I'd like to have an office in Portsmouth. Um, I'd like to continue. I know 84,000, it was level funding. And when we did that, my treasure was still living and not knowing that we're still in COVID right now. Um, if we were going to remain at the senior center, yes, I think $84,000 level funding would be okay. If we have to go somewhere else, I know you have to decrease it. Um, and, um, acceptable to that. But I do hope we can work something out.
I'm not, I'm not. Go ahead. Yeah, I'm not suggesting deep freezing anything. I just wanted to confirm, like, next steps. Um, because it, it seems to me there's been a lot of conversation in town about, you know, um, making sure that the seniors are taken care of. And I think that no one would disagree with that being a priority. I just wanted to make sure that as we look at our funding, that I understand how the senior center will be able, will be proceeding over the next few weeks. You will be meeting with Common Fence Point to sort of talk about possibly having them host, like, the meals or some of the activities that you listed, that sort of thing? Is that a fair thing?
That's correct.
Meeting soon?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, great. Great, that's such a good thing. And I, I even think that, um, Conley would be open to having those meetings, um, you know, get public input as well. Because, you know, I think it's so important for people to, to be able to, um, help us decide the future, you know, where to from here. And, uh, thank you so much. And, um, yeah, um, I think those are my only questions. And thank you so much. And yeah, I think those are my only questions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Am I good? I was muted. Thank you, Mizutu Budan. I know that there's someone that has their hand up. Is there any further comments from counselors? Or I'm going to switch over to.
I just want to know how much guidance you're looking for.
I think this conversation was very helpful.
Thank you. Let me just take this person, Mary Ellen.
Hi, thank you for taking my question. It's not so much a question, but more of a statement. I'd like you to, keeping the senior center asked on the table and not, as Councilwoman Linda Fuchiamet mentioned, we don't know what the future holds for them. And the director stated she is going to speak with Common Fence Point. However, she is interested in looking for another location within Portsmouth. And in order to do that, they are going to need these funds to establish another, another location in Portsmouth and use those funds towards rent and other expenses that might be incurred if they are unable to stay past the June deadline at Anne Hutchinson. So I would just, you know, speaking from an advocate for the senior center, I'd like you to consider their request, keeping them on your civic support budget for this year so that they can entertain other possibilities within Portsmouth and staying in Portsmouth. Thank you.
Hi, Mary Ellen. Call me Linda. So yeah, totally agree with you. I was not in any way suggesting anything except that I wanted to clarify what was going to be happening. And that is that a lot, options will be considered and folks will be able to have numbers attached to those options and that the budget that we present in support of the senior center will, is potentially going to be different than last year. But not to say it's less, it's just I'm not sure where it's going to go exactly, you know. I know in the past, and I looked at the last, whatever was submitted in paper, and it seemed like $84,000 primarily was going to support the salary and I think a few utilities and things. And I just want to, just want to understand how the money is going to be spent and how it has, how it might be done. And yes, of course, you want to be able to explore options with the knowledge that there's going to be support. But I do want to make sure that all the options that might be available are considered, including Common Fence Point, including, I believe, there are private office spaces that you're considering. And have that be an open discussion with the public so we, we all can be on the same page. That's all. But I think we are on the same page, Mary Ellen, so.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, Linda.
Okay, thanks.
And thank you, counselors. Is there any, is there any further comment or follow-up? Yeah, I think this has been some very meaningful discussion. I believe Mr. Rayner has the context that he needs to continue to move forward as he develops the budget, the overall town budget. And I think we will, you know, continue to have discussions, not only about civic support requests, but about, you know, many of our department requests as we continue to move forward through the budget process. This is still a work in progress. We've got a lot of decisions to make as we continue to move forward, and the communication is important. And there will be a lot of communication on various topics. So like I said earlier, we do not take these decisions lightly. They all have impacts, and we need to provide the best services we can to the citizens of Portsmouth. And we have to do that in a fiscally responsible manner. And that's, as counselors, that's what our charge is, and we will continue to do that. So thank you all. Thank you, counselors, for the feedback tonight. And it's going to be another tough budget process. So Mr. Rayner, anything else on that? We're good. But we don't really need to vote on this. This was the discussion. Next, we have correspondence. Who's your receiving place? All those in favor?
Ms. Jupusa?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Dunbar? Hamilton?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Jack Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Rayner?
Hi. Motion passes 7-0. Next, we have future meetings, next regular scheduled council meetings of March 8th, March 22nd, April 12th, and April 26th. Yeah, that's all that's on here tonight, 26. No to it, Jer?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jupusa?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Dunbar?
Hi.
Hamilton?
Hi.
Hi.
Jack Ryan?
Hi.
Ms. Rayner?
Hi. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you all. We see everyone on the 8th. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.